Okay, we're gonna reconvene here, folks. Okay. Alrighty. Anybody who has not spoken yet, who wishes to speak? Give your slip. I have a double here, so first one up, Linda Salmon.
Just wanted to say again, thank you all for your patience. We've been waiting a long time for this. We spent lots and lots of weeks and months drafting language on the current general plan to protect Brisbane and to put the onus, the responsibility of screwing up on the developer. And in one fell swoop, on this amendment, it's all gonna come back to Brisbane. I don't know if you noticed that, but you probably didn't. But I would suggest you very, very carefully at that wording on that before you pass this. Really, totally. That's number one. Number two, the language in the current general plan specifies a specific plan. That means with architectural drawings, engineering, streets, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, none of which we have seen yet. And how many years has it been now? Twenty? At least twenty. Okay? So, we still don't have a specific plan. And the current general plan says, "We don't do any amendments to the general plan, basically, until we have a specific plan when it comes to the Baylands." And we don't have one. And I just want to emphasize that. We need a specific plan. And the reason we don't have one? Because UPC really isn't gonna build that out, and they don't care. They just want the money. They want housing certification so they can sell to the next bidder. They learned that from Southwest Diversified when they bought it, as Tontex, okay? We saw what happened on the Northeast Ridge with Southwest Diversified. All the promises they made to close the quarry when the first house went up, okay? And what happened? Oh, they sold it to somebody else, and the somebody else... We didn't make that promise. Ah, duh. You know, I'm sorry. If you don't write it all down very, very specifically, and if you don't talk about the gaps in the EIR, they will override it. We have learned our lesson on the Northeast Ridge. Do not repeat the same mistake. Please, please. You all want to sit up there as councilmen, and you know what happens in Brisbane. You know what happens in Brisbane. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Michelle, Salmon?
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. First of all, I want to publicly apologize for the camel remark. It was just a story, a parable about, you know, taking an inch and... Give them an inch and take a mile. I'm kind of upset about the talk about lower density, lower density, lower density, because according to the state of California, density is a factor in defining affordable housing. And if one thing I heard, time and time again, through all the housing advocates I listened to, through all the meetings we all listened to, was, "We need affordable housing. We need affordable housing. We need affordable housing." And that's high dens... As defined by the state of California, that's high-density housing. We need transit-oriented housing. We need transit-oriented housing. And, you know, the far reaches of OU2 are not transit-oriented housing. And the whole reason that we had originally considered 2,200 units of housing in OU1 was that it meant the qualifications of, because of the restrictions on the space, being high-density, and next to three major transit opportunities for the people that live there that currently exist, and that would be CalTrains, the Third Street Rail, and the Muni Surface Buses. And, 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 of course, SamTrains. So, I do feel like that that was the whole reason. And now, we want to, you know, bring it down to the, you know, Ice House Hill, and further down closer to the Tang Farm, and incorporate it into Brisbane. I looked at that illustration. There was nothing in that illustration that even begins to look like central Brisbane, or even begins to look like the Northeast Ridge. Okay, 2,200 units of housing without specifying the amount of square feet could leave you open, literally, to 2,200 units of 7,000-square-foot houses like the house that was built on here in the last couple of years. 7,000 square foot. That's a, that's a housing unit. Or, you know, the 4,000-plus-square-foot houses that we built up at the Northeast Ridge instead of the townhomes that were originally planned. So, be careful. It's a slippery slope. Thank you real very much.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay, I don't have any more slips. Beth?
I just wanted to ask this question on behalf of Nancy Coleman and Erin Clevin, who had to leave, and also myself, because I asked this question about what happens if we vote no on amending the general plan. But we also like to know, what happens if we vote yes? And I think that that's what's really unclear. And I've been following this, attending meetings since 2004. And to be honest, I don't think that I could explain to my next-door neighbors what exactly we're voting on, and what we're agreeing to when we're amending this general plan. So, I'm hoping that our attorney will address that. And then, I also want to request that, and we often close the public comment and let them answer, but so often, we're sitting there wanting to ask questions based on their answers. So, I'm hoping that the public comment period will remain open.
Yeah, we'll leave it open.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I don't have any more slips, and not seeing any more hands. Half the three-quarters of the room cleared out, so it's unfortunate. So, who wants to go first? Tom, why don't you go first? Kind of... Or, Michael? Yeah, okay.
Let me start off, and, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
The one question that I think was raised was, what happens if the, if the voters... Assuming the council puts the matter, adopts the general plan at this next meeting, puts it on the ballot, and the voters do not pass it. Essentially, that puts us back to where we essentially are today. We, we don't have a general plan amendment. We have the existing general plan in question. And the city would continue to process the, the current application. That's, that's before it. And, you know, it's hard to say what will come out of that process, but that application is still in play. It's not being rejected or anything of that nature. And so, we will continue to process that application, and the council would take that up. And that's what would happen. So, it's basically back to where we were before we started this discussion about a year ago in terms of whether to change the general plan. Council, of course, has the option of looking at other general plan amendments that might be something that the council would look at. But certainly, because we do have a pending application, we would continue to process that particular application.
Okay.
Can I follow up?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on a question.
Uh?
Me too.
You can go, Madison.
Okay. Can you speak specifically to like what the, you know, what the consequences might be to the city if the general plan amendment was voted down? I don't know if that's a Tom question or a...
Yeah, I think that sort of folds, folds back into sort of a broader question of how we got here. And I think Mr. McMorris probably can articulate that pretty, pretty well.
So, there's a much longer story. You did me justice with your digest. Little, little off, but not by much. The, one of the point, I guess what I would say is this: Jerry Hill is termed out. He's got a couple of years to go. Jerry Hill did not threaten the legislation. He essentially hijacked a bill that was threatened by some Bay Area legislators. It's on the website for those who want to read it. It would have essentially fast-tracked the UPC 4,400 proposal on terms that if you, if you have time to read it in detail, you will find them appalling as a democratic process. And that was going to be moved as part of the housing package. And the best, the big bet was, we have a housing package that started out as three bills in 2017 as part of a budget deal. I want to stress that. The governor got what he wanted out of the budget deal. There were legislative leadership, particularly in the Assembly, who wanted a housing deal. That deal, I believe, ballooned to 15 bills. Don't hold me to that. I might be off on my memory. The 16th bill, there were a couple of bills, but one of them was the Hill bill. And that bill was intended to say, "It's been a decade. There hasn't been movement on the Baylands. It's the biggest piece of land in the Bay Area. There's a housing crisis statewide, but it's particularly acute in the Bay Area. We need you to move." And Brisbane became, for three or four months in Sacramento, became the poster child for local government not moving forward on housing. So, we, the state of California, will do it for you. And by that, I mean the legislature. The big bet was, is Governor Brown gonna sign this bill or not? As the council knows, it was a flip of the coin with a weighted coin. Probably more likely than not that he would sign it, but I... None, none of us know with certainty whether he would have signed it or not. But he did sign a lot of bills in that housing package that nobody thought he would sign originally. So, when you say, "How did we get here, and why is this relevant to the, the general plan amendment now?" The general plan amendment is a good-faith gesture that was agreed so that the bill was not put forward in 2017 officially. It was drafted. It was in final form, as was spoken to. It could have been introduced. It all depends on which legislator you speak to about whether it was gonna be introduced. But as, as the mayor knows, and as Mayor Protem know, Senator Hill said, "Yes, it was going to be introduced until we engaged in the discussions." And those discussions were not easy, as you know. And what we came up with was, what if we put a general plan amendment before the voters by November 2018? That locks us into nothing, because you still have to do a specific plan. You still have to go through all the rest of the process. But it shows good faith, and it moves the ball. It shows that the city is not sitting on the ultimate decision about whether or not to do something on housing and on the Baylands. And Senator Hill sat on that for a while. And ultimately, we had a brief meeting, and he said, "Okay, I accept it." And he didn't accept it on his own behalf. There were discussions with other legislators who wanted to author the bill that ended up with his name on it, and they accepted it. And that took us out of 2017, out of the housing package, and into a 2018 negotiation. And I can go through all the details, but that is why the general plan amendment is before the city in 2018. It was to avoid a ceremoniously Sacramento-dictated approval of UPC's pending proposal at 4,400 units on all of its terms. And it would have been challenged in court. And one of the questions was, how many millions of dollars will it cost to challenge it in court? And we gave you various estimates. I know that you spoke to at least one other firm. The estimates were not far off. They were in the millions. And the question became, are we gonna fight for millions of dollars over this issue, not knowing the outcome? I think both firms thought the bill wouldn't survive ultimately, but you would have spent millions and millions of dollars. And the crisis is predicted to get worse. The governorship will change, and Jerry Hill will be term-limited out. Who will we be dealing with then? At that point, we'll be dealing with the elders of the legislature being the very people who wanted to author the bill in the first place, and intended to author it in the first place. So, the decision, as I understood it, was it the most reasonable action for the city, both fiscally and practically, was to get ahead of the housing crisis as best it could, control its own destiny, and get to the table on reasonable terms. And the mayor and the Mayor Protem can speak to this. They were in the meetings. The notion of 18 to 2,200 was not acceptable at all, as you heard from however many months. And we held to it, and we held to it, and we held to it, and it became acceptable. But it became acceptable in large part because of the good faith showing of putting a ballot measure before the voters. One of the things that was asked for was it not go to the voters. Show good faith by acting as a council. Show that you're gonna adopt it. And the council stood firm and said, "No, we're not going to do this on our own. We're going to put it to the voters." And he accepted that. He did not accept it immediately. And trust me when I do say this, I'm not gonna use other names. Senator Hill has spoken publicly about what he said. But others had comments to us and to others on your council and in your city about how the process played out. Some people think Jerry Hill rolled. Some people think we rolled. Some people think Jerry Brown never would have signed the bill. Everybody's got an opinion, but when you look at the actual facts and you look at the dynamics, it was quite unpredictable. As far as the general plan amendment, that's how it became now. But it also became now on the condition that we would see if UPC and the city could get at the table, which they've been doing of late. It took a while, but they're there. You're both there. And we would put it forward in a thoughtful, factually responsible way, as I think Mayor Lou, I don't know if Lori left, mentioned, a responsible compromise. And let the voters decide for the city of Brisbane. And that's how we got to where we are on the general plan amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Lloyd?
All right. I'm sorry. You asked me, Mr. Mayor, to address one other thing. High-speed rail, the, I believe, the, the next plan that will impact this region is coming out in 2021. That's current projection. It's been delayed before. Again, please don't hold me to that. It might be 2022. I tried to find it quickly earlier, but I, I couldn't find it. I think it's 2021. But we have been told by the High-Speed Rail, the former executive director, as well as one of the current senior commission members or authority board members, that the plan remains, that the Caltrain, new trains, the ones that have been bought from the Japanese consortium that go up to about 115 miles an hour, will be the High-Speed Rail segment for San Jose to San Francisco and San Francisco to Sacramento for the foreseeable future. And the reason they will be it is that you have to change the track bed. You have to do all sorts of things to put in the High-Speed Rail in the urban area that go way beyond the track. And as we have escalating costs, and we have questions about speed outside the Central Valley, things like that, whether you get 140 miles an hour or 115 out of the trains that you've already bought, do you really need that extra 25 miles an hour and the fight? Or should you put off that question till later? And my understanding is you put it off till later. So, that raises a question about the High-Speed Rail rail yard. You can't move High-Speed Rail trains into a rail yard on the Baylands without modifying the track. There's no plan to do that currently. It still says it on High-Speed Rail's website. But if you go look on High-Speed Rail's web, the High-Speed Rail website, you see all sorts of things that it still says that are no longer true. I'm not saying it won't happen. I am saying that they have said, "We still have an interest in having a train yard in the area, but we may not be running trains up the peninsula, so it may be elsewhere." I understand that that begs the question of where. But it's not as certain as it would have seemed two years ago. One of our first arguments to Senator Hill was, "Why are you enriching UPC?" And what ended up happening, as we played it out, was what I described. And we have been in touch with High-Speed Rail, and the story's been consistent, and everything they've told us has come true. That's where we are now.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. John, or Lloyd?
Could I follow up with that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Just as, I, I sit on the local policymaker High-Speed Rail group, and, and I don't believe that the EIR is due out until 2020, or they even contemplate where they want to go?
They announced, and I couldn't find the press release, John and I both recall. It's, it's either 2021 now or 2022. And you know what?
Then it must have changed in the last month.
It did. It's very recent, and I'm now thinking with the new executive director, maybe it wasn't actually in a press release.
But one thing we should keep in mind is, San Francisco is also looking to dispose of their rail yard. And so, even with electrification, the chances are that someone is going to need a rail yard somewhere is a very real possibility. And so, we need to keep that in mind also, because it's not just High-Speed Rail, which is, is something that may or may not come to the Bay Area. It's Caltrain itself and its electrification process. So, there's, there's a couple different things in the room there.
A follow-up question. I think it's important to get to the, the meat of what's been asserted here is that, oh, well, if they come in and they take the west side, and we've told them they can put housing there, does that mean they get to put it on the east side? And, you know, that, or have we entitled them to housing? So, where do they get to put it? And I think it's important for staff to walk through, like, what the scenario would be for, you know, an east-side rail yard and a west-side rail yard? And how does that impact us? How does that impact UPC's plan?
I like that when everybody turns to me and says, "Okay, you, you got it."
It's on you.
The, the technical, and let's talk about different relations of timing. If a specific plan has been approved, and then a rail yard goes right into the middle of it, you have a, you have a specific plan that can't be built. And you've got to go back and amend the specific plan. If that rail yard is approved in some location on the Baylands before a specific plan is approved, then that plan is going to have to accommodate that rail yard. Now, in terms of that question, entitle, so let's, let's start with the basics of a general plan. General plan policy, and I'll say this with all sorts of attorneys around, does not entitle anybody to do anything, other than if you want an entitlement, it better be consistent with the city's policy. And so, as you look at a general plan amendment, essentially, what this general plan amendment is telling UPC is, "Come back with a specific plan that meets these policies, because the amendment you brought us wasn't there." And I think it was, what, maybe 15 minutes into the Planning Commission meeting until the specific plan was getting first commission hearing, and the commission was rejecting the specific plan. So, the reason that we're looking at a general plan amendment rather than a plan amendment and a specific plan is it was very apparent very early, as it was with, with the city council, that there are serious fundamental issues that need to be resolved before ever looking at the details of a specific plan, like, what should the setback for residential be? And should this street have a bicycle lane that's within the street right-of-way, striped or off-street? There's a whole series of details to look at in a specific plan. But the first and very fundamental issue that needs to be resolved is, what are the appropriate land uses to go in the Baylands? What intensity, and what is the general distribution? And as you can see with, with these hearings tonight, we're a long way from dealing with a specific plan and all the details of what do buildings look like, because we aren't even in agreement on, you're hearing the public on density. It ought to be higher, it ought to be lower. So, that's where we are right now in terms of, of general plan amendment.
And when we had our one-on-one meeting a couple of weeks ago, we talked about this as well. And from what I gathered from staff during that meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, is let's say that UPC takes, I mean, that High-Speed Rail takes the west side, where we're proposing housing to go. That does not mean that now, because the east side is what's now available, that that's now where the housing is going to be located, and vice versa, right? So, if, you know, we decide to put housing, if, if they take the east side, then that doesn't necessarily mean that, oh, now the city is in financial ruin, because that was all of the commercial that we needed to offset this development, and then some. The state would be looking at paying us in perpetuity what that, what that commercial would bring in, into the, the city's coffers. So, I think it's important to, to make that clear, what happens in those two cases. And I want to make sure that I am synthesizing that correctly.
I'll give part of the answer, and then I think Clay or Michael can give, give the rest. There's one other consideration. So, let's assume then that, given a 2021 or 2022 EIR and High-Speed Rail, they aren't going to be condemning or looking to condemn anything to sometime after that. If this general plan amendment goes to vote in November and is approved, and High-Speed Rail comes in and, and comes in with a, with a plan that has, that takes up the residential area, you now have to amend the general plan, because the High-Speed Rail isn't making that work. And since it was approved by the voters, it needs to be amended by the voters. So, it's a far more, that's the other protection that, that sits here, is the November election that would put this general plan policy, or however you amend it, into place in the general plan that could only be changed again by vote of the people, even if High-Speed Rail does come in and take property. If you have to amend these policies to make it work, and it does not happen automatically, simply because High-Speed Rail, even if they would take the entire area west of the rail line, nothing happens automatically as to what happens with that housing until you, as a city, act on your general plan. And if it's already gone to public vote, then the voters vote again.
So, I know the question's been asked, not tonight, but the general plan amendment, if it passes, it's a binding vote. So...
That is correct, that, that there isn't any qualifying language in the proposed general plan amendment that would indicate to the contrary. And therefore, it is, it's not an advisory vote. It would be a binding vote, either approving the general plan or not. The follow-up, Madison's question, though, about the eminent domain, I, I don't, I don't think we want to hold out great expectation that if there were a condemnation action, that the cities thought about getting commercial, or getting financial benefit as a result of proposed development on the site, that we would necessarily be able to claim a, a damage, and that we would be compensated by the condemning agency. We would certainly make the argument about that, but I don't think it's not, it's certainly not as clear as if we had a true property interest in the property, in which case you would be compensated.
Okay. Yeah, because you weren't in that, you weren't in that meeting, so...
I don't want to argue with my city attorney, and I'm not gonna argue the law. But we've been making this argument to High-Speed Rail for probably five or six years now, that we haven't, that while it's intuitive that the property owner has an economic interest there, the city also has one. And if there is going to be a governmental use out there, a state governmental use, that there needs to be some compensation to the city, not through an eminent domain process, but through some sort of municipal fee structure. And those are in place elsewhere in the state for these types of things. So, I agree with my city attorney in terms of the law, but I think what I was speaking to was maybe a, a different process and a different approach to it.
Okay.
If I can piggyback on that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, you know, a lot of folks, you know, talked about UPC coming out with a big financial gain if we, you know, approve the general plan amendment and do the zoning, and then High Speed Rail buys or uses eminent domain or purchases the property, you know, and so there's this increase in value. Could, as part of a development agreement, could the city state that if we give you this zoning for these land uses, and High Speed Rail comes in, that we could expect some compensation from that sale since we've increased the value of their property?
Great. I'm sure there is going to be a number of issues that will come up in the development agreement that both sides will want to negotiate. And if that's a, if that's an item that the council feels that it would like to have on the table, we can certainly put that on the table for discussion.
All right, great. Thank you.
Lloyd, so there was a list of questions that I asked.
I have them, and we'll see if I manage all. I'm going to do them in the order that you gave them to me. Be a lot easier. One was having to do with years of pile driving. One of the things that in the EIR, we had presumed that pile driving would occur and then looked at mitigation measures such as pre-drilling, which would very much reduce the amount of time it would take to drive piles. As we were meeting with council members, dealing with some of the questions in our one-on-one meetings, Councilmember O'Connell had asked us to look at alternative technologies to pile driving. And there are in fact some alternative technologies that in fact BART has used where they've needed to drive piles right under or within residential neighborhoods. And I believe it's called drill and cap in place. Since you what pile driving is, and you've seen it out at the marina, you take a big steel pile and you just pound it in the ground. The idea of drill and cap in place is you would drill a hole very similar to a well casing, and then you would use, rather than a giant steel pile driven in the ground, it would be a reinforced concrete pile. Now vertically, and depending on how far to bedrock, lateral movement and so on, it may not work in all situations, but we have modified the mitigation measure regarding pile driving to require those kinds of alternative technologies if the city engineer determines that from a geotechnical standpoint, there is an alternative to pile driving. In relation to water quality in the lagoon, and I'll start with the caveat regarding SEQA. There is a major limitation to the California Environmental Quality Act, and that is what SEQA is very good at is to prevent creating damage as part of a project. SEQA is pretty well, and the only term I can use, is worthless trying to fix an existing problem. Because the way SEQA works is you take the existing situation, and that is the given, that is your baseline, and then you measure if this project, in this case now a general plan amendment is approved, what changes from the baseline. What you cannot do in a SEQA document is change the baseline to fix an existing problem. And so that can be done through ordinance, it can be done through aspirational general plan policies and general plan policies. So in relation to water quality in the lagoon, given the myriad of laws in place, one, to cap the landfill, stop the leachate, leaving the landfill, to treat the water running off the site, all just complying with the law that by law you cannot increase the amount of hazards going to the lagoon. And that's as far as SEQA can take you. You have the opportunity as a council to not only look at eliminating or avoiding the impacts of new development, but at a proactive water quality campaign or water quality program to deal with the existing lagoon. But trying to put that on new development to fix an existing problem is, it's just a limitation that SEQA has to deal with. The question also came up in terms of, how will the cap be done and liquefaction, and how does that all work? And I think you've heard the term data gap used for this. Because since we are dealing with, and since we do not have a formal Title 27 closure plan, we do not have site-specific development projects in front of the council, and now what we have is a general plan amendment, what we are dealing with is general plan policy level action by the city council. And what the EIR does, what the general plan policies would do, would be to put in place performance standards. And that's what the law does also. So in relation to liquefaction, the law says that every building on the Baylands shall be designed to meet the applicable building code and keep a building safe to the standard of the law in case of liquefaction. In terms of capping the landfill, the requirement is a cap be placed on the landfill that's impermeable, that does not allow water to go from surface through, no piercing of the landfill that would create a situation where water is pushing leachate into the groundwater level. And so again, this is a situation where the policy tells the applicant, you bring us a plan, not bring us a plan and then we'll see and we'll just punt it down the road, but you bring us a plan that demonstrates how you will meet this standard. You bring us back a plan that demonstrates in terms of capping, how that cap and how the landfill closure, and in this case with landfill closure, the regional board would be the responsible agency. How does that capping work? How does that meet the applicable standard? In relation to liquefaction, as you get every individual site-specific development, it will come with a engineering, building engineering and geotechnical analysis of every site-specific project that will be required to demonstrate how is that building protected from liquefaction. You'll get that a little bit more generally with the specific plan and then every individual site as you go through every individual site. Because one of the things that we've talked about in the Baylands is conditions change from location to location. So that will be addressed on those two levels. In relation to sea level rise, there is a standard, a performance standard in the EIR and also in the general plan amendment that says the site will be protected from 100 years of projected sea level rise. And not only just sea level rise, but you will protect the site from a 100-year flood given 100 years of sea level rise. And that sea level rise will be determined based on available regulations and guidelines to deal with sea level rise at the time that a development project is actually coming in. Who is responsible if something goes bad? One of the, and again, I'll defer to the attorneys on this when I'm done with this answer, but one of the policies in the general plan is that, or the general plan amendment, is to create financial assurances so that if something does go wrong, there is money to deal with it. But the entity that is not responsible, that is not liable and has no liability, is the city. So this is not, if something goes wrong, it goes to the taxpayer. And now I'm looking at the attorney. Okay, he nods.
Correct. As I think we've indicated to the council when this has come up from time to time, that number one, the, you know, the regulatory agencies are the ones who will come up with the approval for the remediation, the landfill closure, that the council is to rely on. And when the council looks at a specific plan that comes forward that will have this remediation plan and closure plan in place, it exercises what's called discretionary immunity concerning the approval of such a plan. And under the, under the law, that basically immunizes the city from liability should something in fact go wrong. As Lloyd indicated, to address that issue, though, there will be the kind of financial infrastructure put in place, as it were, so that there is some, something in place. So if something does go wrong, there will be some financial backing to address that issue.
Okay. So I'll keep going because there were more questions. Adequacy of the EIR, and one of the things that is, and I can understand why it would sound counterintuitive, how can an EIR be adequate for a general plan but not a specific plan? And under SEQA, you deal with the level of detail of the project that you have available. So when you are dealing, for example, in a complete update of a general plan, your EIR is by necessity far more general than it would be if what you're dealing with is a site-specific development project. And so what we looked at as part of the findings, as part of the mitigation measures in the EIR was that there was information regarding, for example, characterization of what's in the landfill, characterization of contaminants in the ground. And based on the information that exists to date, it did not appear that there were any issues based on what we saw of the technical studies and peer review that would preclude the ability to remediate a site to meet a cleanup or a health-based, health-based risk and have a site safe for future uses. However, if we would say, no, this EIR is adequate for the specific plan, then we would also be implying that the characterization that tells us from a policy standpoint, we're okay to say, bring us back a plan that meets these standards, if we certified an EIR and said it's adequate for a specific plan, then we're implying that those characterization studies are all that needs to be done, and that is just simply not the case. In relation to water supply, in state laws I mentioned earlier, there are, at a general plan level, your water supply needs to be reasonably likely, not assured. So for a general plan level, the OID, Oakdale Irrigation District, because of the term sheet, is reasonably likely. Doesn't mean it's assured, doesn't mean we're ready to sign a contract today because clearly the city is not ready to do that. The EIR has identified before you had actually signed contracts. There are engineering studies that need to be done as to how you get that much water on an annual basis to the city on a daily basis. Because there are limitations. As one of the rules to move water through MID and move it through the San Francisco PUC is that Brisbane water that's moving in a paper agreement, but physically there's water that actually gets transferred, cannot impact negatively the customers of those two agencies, cannot impact the customers of MID, cannot impact the customers of SFPUC. There is engineering and design work that needs to be done in order to make that assurance. And so since that engineering work is not done, and really couldn't be done without knowing what level of land use are you designing this all for, that is why the finding that is not adequate for a specific plan. The question also came up as to the relationship of land use and what had been said many times, you can't really do a remedial action plan without knowing what land use you're doing it for. Because the situation that the applicant faced, given that they are proposing or have proposed a general plan amendment to residential, they didn't know in submitting that application whether residential would be approved. And so had they attempted to do a remedial action plan at the same time as this package of general plan amendment, they would have designed a site, designed a plan for a residential use that they don't know that they would get, that they don't even know would ever be permitted. And so what needed to be done was to define what are the land uses that could be permitted within the Baylands? And that is exactly what the general plan amendment does. In terms of how a wrap would be done, given this general plan amendment, it would be known that over the majority of the site, residential would not be permitted, and that gives the applicant the ability to know within those areas, we're going to design our remedial action and landfill closure for non-residential use. The reason that that area that says residential permitted is important is because within that area, we have said, and that by general plan policy in this amendment, that that area, wherever you're going to propose residential, shall be remediated to a 1 in 1 million standard. So this general plan amendment would tell UPC, tell the applicant, whatever that final design is of wherever residential would be permitted, within that area, that's where you can put residential. And our expectation as a city is anywhere you put that, put residential within that where it's permitted, it shall be remediated to the 1 in 1 million standard. Not only residential, but also the support uses, parks at ground level, schools, daycare, so on. When you get from the general plan, which is just the policy, and I've said that, I'll say it again because I think it bears repeating, what the general plan says is, bring us back a specific plan that meets these policies. You are not committing to approving whatever it is that happens to show up. You are saying to the applicant, bring us back something that meets these policies, and then we will go through a brand-new discretionary review, and as you heard the applicant say earlier, with a brand-new EIR. Because given that you will be operating at a different level of detail with a new specific plan, there will be the need for a new EIR. Because I cannot picture how you could ever come up with findings for a specific plan coming in, meeting this general plan amendment that says we'll use the old general plan EIR. There are a number of things that need to be in that specific plan when it comes back that are not here now, that are not in the specific plan now. So to, and I'll say also, we heard several times tonight, there's not a specific plan. No, there is a specific plan. This specific plan was submitted by the applicant in 2011. The public hearings that were opened at the planning commission included the specific plan, and your earlier hearings also included the specific plan. However, there's so many issues with that specific plan to bring it into alignment with the general plan. There's things that have to be done. Some of them are, again, in your proposed general plan amendment, that the specific plan needs to provide a schedule for the actual physical remediation of the OU1, OU2, and the actual capping of the landfill. That requirement is not now in the general plan, and there is no provision in the specific plan that says when the applicant will get around to doing it. So a specific plan coming back will not only detail the development of the site, but it will detail essentially the applicant saying, we will remediate OU2, OU1 by such-and-such time, we will remediate OU2 by such-and-such time, and we will actually cap the landfill by such-and-such time. And how will they know that they could actually do that? Because they will actually have the approvals from the regulatory authorities when they're doing a specific plan. So they will not be able to say, we have no idea when DTSC will get around to approving anything. We don't know when the regional board will get around to approving it. Why have that occurring before the specific plan? So you do not approve zoning in a specific plan that then is contradictory to what DTSC and the regional board gave. And also, given the policy, if you had a, an action by the regional board or DTSC that came back with a cleanup standard that is not consistent with the performance standard in this general plan amendment, essentially the highest residential standard, the 1 in 1 million, if that's ultimately what got approved, you would be able to look UPC straight in the eye and said, our policy said residential must be remediated, this standard, you don't get the residential because you're not consistent with that policy. That's why it's so important realistically to have the wrap go first. Because when you approve the zoning in the specific plan, you will know what those conditions that the two regulatory two regulatory agencies have put on the project are. The other policy that's in the general plan, that is not in the general plan now, and supplements the existing general plan, is that the project will pay for all its capital costs. All the infrastructure that's needed will be paid for by the project unless there's grants from state or federal agencies, but it's not coming from the city of Brisbane or Brisbane taxpayers. It also says in that policy that every increment of development that is brought in front of the city, the applicant needs to demonstrate how that is revenue positive to the city. That's not a requirement right now, but that would be a requirement of this general plan amendment. And, the other, final requirement, well, two more. The other requirement, when I say each increment, and this was one of the big struggles the Planning Commission had, in dealing with the, when they did talk about the specific plan, what is the phasing of the specific plan? How do we know when we're going to get amenities? You know, there's lots of parks in there, and you saw the green spaces and all that. How do we know when we're getting that in relation to residential? How do we know when we're getting that in relation to infrastructure? How do we know what infrastructure we're going to get in what order? And, the general plan policy now is that it's going, that every increment of development shall have an appropriate level of infrastructure and appropriate level of amenities as determined by the city. So, no, well, you didn't tell us that we had to do that. That rule is there. The last policy that I wanted to point out in the general plan amendment is one regarding testing of soil before moving it off of the landfill. And as this community knows very well, there are, there's a temporary facility there that has stockpiled soil, which is going to be used for ultimately grading of the site. And the policy that was added in relation to that soil is that, it's K at the bottom of page two, prior to the issuance of a grading permit to export soil or move soil from the existing landfill area for incorporation and a remediation or grading plan, the soil shall be tested in a manner approved by the city. That policy does not now exist. And, so that's what the general plan amendment does, different than what the general plan does now. And, one more thing I do need to point out is, all of those significant unavoidable impacts are in fact detailed in the findings, proposed findings in attachment B to the packet that you got today. Starting on page B108, section D are the findings for significant unavoidable impacts. And that section, starting on that page, details every one of those impacts that was on that list before, as to, in addition, why, what is the impact, why is it unavoidable, and what mitigation measures will be imposed to reduce but not eliminate the significant impact. I think that was all the questions in the list.
Yeah. Does, council have any other?
Yes, I do.
clarifications? Go ahead, Madison.
I want to talk a little bit about the map. Dana brought up, you know, questions about why weren't all of Ray's suggestions incorporated, and also about the mixed-use definition. I think it's helpful for us to really define, I think there's, I think the public maybe doesn't understand exactly what mixed-use means, so maybe we could start there.
In terms of the map, as we looked at putting together a general plan category, the term that's used is baylands mixed-use. It could be anything, it could be called just baylands, it could be called baylands development, it could be called, I was reading a history book the other day, and I know somebody used the word compromise, you could call it the baylands compromise, it does not change the policy at all. When that map shows residential permitted here, residential prohibited here, when the policy says that it's only, residential is only permitted west of the rail line, north of Main Street, that is the only place that's permitted, and no matter what word games you want to play, it's not permitted anywhere else. In terms of the issue of, there's a definition of mixed-use in the municipal code, to say that because the municipal code says mix of residential and commercial on a, in a building or on a site, somehow governs the general plan is to turn state general plan law upside down. It's the general plot, the general plan that controls the zoning and not the other way around. And, even there, the consistency with that municipal code is, the baylands is a site. And we talk about the project site, the bayland site, so, mixed-use, that the definition of the municipal code fits for the general plan. I think the other reason not to create a series of different land use categories is that while the residential is in a clearly defined area, whatever that area ultimately is defined to be, then we know that within that area where residential is permitted, 18 to 2200 units. Whatever amount of commercial you have, whether it's 4 million, 5 million, 6 or 7, if there is one category for the entire baylands, then that 7 million is spread over the entirety of the site. If you have a baylands mixed-use and a baylands trade commercial, you now have to make the decision, how many square feet of commercial in each category? You need development standards for each category, and FARs for each category, and you've seen how difficult it is right now, just dealing with, what do we want the residential area to be? We would now have to, with creating multiple commercial categories or multiple categories, try to figure out how many square feet of commercial go where. And, in the end, what seemed to be most important is that the city is telling UPC, bring us back a specific plan that spreads that commercial both east and west of the rail line, we will then review it to look at, was that appropriately done? As opposed to trying to guess a number ahead of time, and gee, if we guessed wrong and don't like, you'd end up finding we didn't like that number in each category, and then it's voted on, we're then stuck with something that we didn't have to stick ourselves with. So, that's the reason for one category.
That was more flexibility.
And, and just to follow up on what Lloyd says, I think, in fact, a number of Mr. Miller's suggestions were in fact incorporated in the, in the diagram. For example, he, along with many other members of the community, suggested that the area for residential be extended south of Geneva to the Main Street extension, and that was incorporated. He had some concern, I believe, that there was some ambiguity about where residential would be permitted and what would be, where it be prohibited, and the land use map was revised to reflect, as it does now, of where exactly residential is permitted and where is prohibited. Some of the other changes he suggested were really just, you know, word changes, and given the fact that the community had seen the language that had been proposed earlier, and didn't seem to have concerns about what it was providing, those changes weren't made. But certainly, both his comments, as well as comments of all the community, were given great consideration by the, by the staff, and certainly vetted with the council before we brought forth the general plan amendment as it reads tonight.
Right. I remember there were some like, there were some minor things that maybe he had suggested that we didn't move forward with, one of the main ones being, you know, how we, how we classify all the area that's not going to be for housing and what, what we call that. And so, I think Lloyd's answer speaks to kind of the crux of maybe what Dana was bringing up earlier. My final question is related to workforce housing, so when we met one-on-one, I brought up, you know, what Barbara had suggested in terms of workforce housing, and that kind of opens up a can of worms, so to speak. So, I think it might be helpful for staff to respond about what happens if we, you know, designate all the housing to be workforce housing, or a large portion, or just have workforce housing in general, what then happens when those designations are made.
Well, workforce housing really isn't a legal term, I mean, it's more of a term of art. The term that was of, was cited from the Health and Safety Code was efficiency unit. And the issue with efficiency units is when it's permissive, it allows the city to develop a zone where they allow them in their, that minimum size, and they can have a partial bath or a shared bath and shared kitchen facilities. But the, sort of the kicker or the poison pill is that if you, city chooses to allow those units, they lose all control over density within a half mile of a, basically transit. So, if the city were to permit those, they would lose their control over the number of units, the density, et cetera, for those particular class of, of housing type, and it's also permissive, it didn't, at least the attorney may want to speak to this, it didn't imply that the city could restrict it to those units, it would be additional or, you know, allowed, but not limited to that type of housing.
The intention all along was agree on a range, and then work with the developer on what works out for both the city and the developer, and, and that was another reason that we didn't get into the level of detail.
Right. Okay. That's it for me.
Actually, I'd entertain a motion to extend the meeting, let's say 11:30.
Oh, no. No, we can't go to 11:30.
Well, I want to get this done tonight, then. We want to get something that, we're not going to approve it, but we got some discussion to have with staff here on this, so if you think you, you give me a time when you think you can get that done.
Well, I don't know about getting it done, but I can't go, I can't go past 11. That's, that's drawing the line, we've been meeting since 6:30 this evening, and I've had a full day of work, and
Have a second?
We've got a
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 11 o'clock. Clay, what do you need from us tonight?
Well, we will be bringing this item, as was presented tonight, back to you next Thursday night for approval. As you know, we have a short timeframe in terms of placing this on the ballot, and unless we receive any direction tonight to change something, you'll see what we have presented this evening.
Okay. Does council wish to change anything?
No.
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 Terry?
I, I would like to state my opposition to going up to the 7 million square feet of commercial. I think it is pushing the boundaries. I think we saw from the financial report that we got, that that's not necessary to have financially stable development there. Part of it is, is, from what I hear, is from, from some of the proponents of more development from the community, is that that gives enough profit or enough financial incentive for the developer to make it profitable and to make it buildable, and to make it, that they can do the cleanup, and that somehow we need to, the theory is that we need to build in their cleanup of the site to our, what we do as our general plan. And for me, I think, I've always known, they've known, that it was a toxic site when they bought it, they knew they were responsible for cleaning up that site, and because it's been put off so long, the costs have only gone up. But I don't think that we necessarily need to change, you know, double our housing, double our commercial, and double everything to make this a viable project. So, I would rather see this, you know, I made the original motion to bring it at 4 million square feet, and I know that's changed a little bit and it's morphed, but I still have very real concerns about the size of the commercial and the availability for more of our renewable energy site, because if we're covering everything, or covering a lot of it with commercial sites, that's going to take away some of the opportunities that the public really wanted in there. And we don't have any wording in this that requires a certain amount of, of excess renewable energy on the site. I know it's going to be subject to building codes that are saying energy-neutral within a couple years, that's the state legislation, but I really would think that the project could have a better chance of succeeding, or the vote of the people, if it had less commercial involved, and we weren't looking at building an entire new city. I mean, doubling all of our, our on-the-ground physical presence. So, that's what I'd like to see. I know I'm in the minority on this, and I know that it may not be a possibility, but that would go a long ways with making me more comfortable with this. The other thing that I'd like to ask is, maybe we could get some clarification, because on the original project that I think was the DSP, they had a variety of, with 4,400 units, or 43, 47, or whatever it was, and the site that they were planning to build it on, we had densities ranging from 30 to 85 dwelling units per acre. And now, we've changed it to 1,800 to 2,200, and from what the developer said tonight, or the representative said tonight, we're looking at, at least 50 to 100 dwelling units per acre. And I'm just wondering how that pencils out, because it seems that we're, we're changing the density or the size or the, you know, of the units, and I don't know how that is going to look on the ground. We've had a couple people from the audience that asked that the development looks like Brisbane, and at 50 to 100 dwelling units per acre, it is not going to look like Brisbane. So, what kind of space would we need to make that happen? I don't know, but I think it's something that we should get a little more information from staff on what the realities on the ground are going to be, using the footprint that we've got, and assuming that it's not going to be 100% residential in that district, because they do want some commercial uses, they do want, you know, amenities that are not residential. So, it's going to take up some of the ground. But, but we don't really have a good sense of that, and I think it would help to have that at a future, at our next meeting, so that we had a better sense of the densities at this level. So, those are my comments at the moment, and I hope that we can address some of those at the next meeting.
I have a follow-up question for you. I remember that we, you ended up compromising at one point and resting on, and correct me if I'm wrong, for, was it four and a half million plus half a million for a hotel? So, you just mentioned 4 million, are you still amenable to 5 overall?
I would be amenable to 5 overall, and again, it is a compromise, and it is looking at what's on the ground and what, what we can do. And, you know, but the first one that we made was 4 million and the 18 to 2,200 square feet, and then it's morphed from there, it went up half a million, then it went up another half million for a potential hotel site, and, you know, then it went to, let's go to the complete maximum that the EIR studied, because that is the maximum that we could ever go to without a new EIR, or at least an addendum to the EIR. And I think we're just sort of pushing the boundaries there to try to maximize the work that's gone into the current EIR that we know has data gaps, and, and to bring it forward maximizing that amount. And I would like it tipped back a little bit, so we have a little, a few less unmitigated issues, impacts, and, and that's where I'm coming from, and
Karen?
We'll see how it goes.
Okay. I want to make a clarification that I do not believe this city council I want to make a clarification that I do not believe this city council contemplated 7 million square feet of commercial for the benefit of UPC. I think that decision sort of came across the table as a financially wise decision for us to cover, you know, our costs moving forward, and I stand by that. I did not make any kind of decisions with UPC's benefit in mind. This was for our financial benefit. So I just want to clarify that. And, you know, being the new kid on the block in this whole process, I walked into what I can only describe as an extraordinary situation that was a mess beyond belief, that I cannot even believe we were put into. And I am extremely proud of our city council and staff and consultants for the way this has been handled and the amount of detail that I've seen over the last six months now is absolutely extraordinary. I think no stone was left unturned, and those stones that were not overturned, turned up, you guys brought to our attention. So I'm completely proud of the process, and I didn't do it for you guys, I did it for us.
Clay, question in regards to commercial. Regardless of what we approve on a general plan amendment, doesn't mean that's what would be approved in a specific plan. Is that, is that correct? Because...
Yeah. I mean, I was, I was going to say, say that, and I, I think prior, most people, no, but just to be, maybe state the obvious, that this is an up-to number. And so while I think it's entirely to be expected that the applicant will ask for that up-to number, that will ask for 7 million, the specific plan is ultimately something of, in your control as a city council. So it may be that, you know, when you look at the site and look at the densities and look at the layout of it, that it comes up to be something less than that. And there is no flooring, no floor on, on the downside. So it's, it's, it was, the, the whole idea of the 7 million really was flexibility in planning. It wasn't that we guarantee that that's what it's going to be.
Right.
I have a follow, sorry. You're going to follow up?
Want to say something else?
Oh, I just had a follow-up question. So, you know, originally when we were looking at just OU1 for housing and then 4 million square feet of commercial, UPC was coming back and saying, well, that's a West Side project. And that's not, that's, that's not enough commercial to warrant that being spread across to the landfill and the, the amount of cleanup required to get the landfill up to par has to be offset by, you know, has to be offset by something. And so also, you know, keeping the housing in, in a small area would mean that, that OU2 would be open for the rest of the commercial. So now that we're looking at, you know, bringing the housing down to Main Street, and we're looking at 5 million potentially, you know, Terry, Terry is suggesting 5 million square feet. Do you envision, because now the housing is taking up more space, that that, then then, 5 million square feet of commercial would be enough to get pushed over onto the East Side? Because I think that's, you know, this is important. We're looking for you to clean up the entire site and have one specific plan, and we're not looking for an East Side-West Side project where you touch the West Side and we say, let's come back to the East Side later. Because I guarantee you, this council wants one cohesive plan, and we need something that, we need you to clean up that landfill. We need you, and when I say that, I'm specifically meaning the dump. You know, obviously OU2 and OU1 will need to get cleaned up because housing will be located there, but we need Title 27 landfill closure, and that needs to happen. So, you know, one of the things that we've been discussing as a council is, we have to make sure that, that the plan incorporates both sides of the tracks. So do we envision, and, or maybe that's something staff can come back with, now that housing has been adjusted into OU2, would 5 million square feet then have to get pushed over to the East Side as well, or would that all still fit in that one spot?
Well, my, my first reaction is I, I can't improve upon the way you've articulated that. I think that that is exactly what we want to have happen, is a plan...
My question.
Okay. The mic's on. My apologies. I was indicating I, I can't improve upon the way Councilwoman Davis articulated that. That's exactly what we want, is a plan for the entire site. And I think you're, you're asking for maybe more of a, for us to take maybe another kind of look at the footprint and to make sure that 5 million, I think you're indicating up to the 7 million could, will do that. And we can do that between now and, and next week, unless, John, do you want to respond to it now, or? Yeah, let, let us take a look at that and, and maybe be able to provide some overview so that we can visually kind of look at that.
Because for me, that's my primary concern. You know, aside from financial benefit, and of course, that's great, we need a project that takes up all of the site, so all of the site is cleaned up and the dirtiest spot is not left for later. And so we've got to come up with a level of housing and commercial that's going to accomplish that.
Just to kind of emphasize again what's in the general plan amendment language, is that we're requiring the project, as it moves along, to be revenue positive to the city. So that is going to be, the city, I mean, that's, that's going to be the law of the city. So we're not going to be in a position where we're taking on expense and not have some sort of offset to that. That's, that's going to be our law.
Okay. So...
Can I, can I say anything?
Go ahead.
I mean, I know it's 11:01, but, you know, we had a lot to discuss here, so I'll try and keep it to the same amount of time. On a question for staff, so if, if an area, you know, that's identified in the GPA that's allowing housing, and then through the remediation action plan identifies that this particular area cannot accommodate the ground-level housing standard, does that mean then that area cannot have housing?
The, the simple answer is yes. That would mean that area, if, housing must meet that standard.
Housing has to meet that standard. So if there's this area doesn't, if you can't, can't reach that standard, you can't build housing there. Okay. And then on the commercial square footage, and I know there's concern that we're developing too much of the site. And when we look at Sharepoint, it's got 100, approximately 100 acres and about 3 million square feet. And granted, Sharepoint was designed in a way that we would not design it today, because it's got all that ground parking, right? We were not going to do that anymore, you know? We're going to be smarter with how we park people, how we move people around. But when you look at the amount of square footage, or the amount of acreage out in the Baylands, and the, the, the amount of square footage that's out at Sharepoint, going up to 7 million isn't, is not a huge dense commercial development. If you look at something like The Cove, which has got about 20 acres and about 1.7 million square feet, yeah, okay, that's really dense, right? And we're not getting, we're not proposing that. But to make your point, Madison, which I really agree upon, is that we do need to fill both sides of the Baylands. We need to, to incorporate one plan that develops the entire site with smart development, and that incorporates a lot of open space in between the different uses. And, and we're going to get to that when we dive into the specific plan part of development. Lloyd, you had said it, and I know you even said, you know, I've said this lots of times, but the council has the authority to modify any part of the, of the specific plan as it sees reasonably fit. So if you, you know, we do the general plan amendment, UPC comes back with the specific plan, if there are things that we think need to be changed, we have the authority to do that, correct?
Yes, as long as the changes you have are consistent with the general plan.
Absolutely. And if there were changes that were different than what's being before the voters and the GPA, then those changes would have to go back to the voters.
Correct.
Okay. Um, let's see.
Cliff, can I just piggyback real quick where you...
Absolutely.
...was your thought?
Mm-hmm.
John, what's Crocker Park, 3.7 million? And how many acres? 180?
It's 104.
Yeah, it's about, that was about closer to 180, 200. It's a lower density than Share...
Than Sharepoint?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, let's see. There's just one last thing I, I did want to mention. So last couple of weeks, I did receive some information in the mail from UPC, came as a, as a resident. And, you know, I didn't, you know, I saw it and it was just on the coffee table, and then I, I saw a post from some folks on residents of Brisbane. Not everybody unfriends me, I guess, or whatever blocks me. But, you know, the discussion was, hey, did you get this? And some people said, yeah, I got it, and some people said, no. And, you know, I didn't think that was right. I mean, if you're going to send out something, everyone should get it. In fact, I think I was the only council member that got it. Now, granted, it didn't say me, it just said, you know, resident. So, and then, you know, there was just a couple of things in there that, you know, kind of irked me a little bit, you know, talking about, you know, wanting the city to put forth a feasible plan. And, and I think what we're doing is. And, you know, and in the information, it talked about 4,400 units, and we're definitely not going there, and that's, that I don't think makes a feasible plan. And then the last thing was that after 12 years, the city council is ready to move forward with the project. And, okay, I, I think we're at fault for the lane a little bit, but it takes two to tango. And this thing la, has lasted a long time because both sides have, it's taken a while to get our, our acts together. But there were some comments tonight that, from UPC, that were different than what I've heard before. And, and I'm glad that they were said tonight, saying that doubling the size of our city is a big deal. And it is. There's no other city anywhere that's going to contemplate doing that. And I'm glad that you acknowledge, acknowledged that, that you're good with the ground floor or the ground-level standard for housing. That's the first time you've said that. That you support Fred Lee being our consultant. And that's important to this council, that's important to this community, and that you acknowledged that, and I, I want to thank you for that. You said, and you can clarify, if, if I captured this correctly, at least 25% open space. So when our general plan says open space, open area, and that's always been an issue of contention, so you're committed to at least 25% open space?
Well, I didn't differentiate what's open space and open area. The plan requirement in the general plan is at least 25%.
Think about it. Okay.
The one thing I will tell you is...
What's come up on...
Given all of these discussions that we're having about, is it 5 million feet, is it 7 million feet? I want you to, again, just acknowledge this is 580 acres, not counting the bay, and that's 25 million square feet of land. And if we're at 10 million feet, that's only .4 coverage. So we're not, and that's if it's all on one level. So again, we're, we're not going to cover all of the land. This will not be as dense a project. Just to put this in perspective, we're building 1,700 units on 20 acres on the Schlegel Lock site, which is immediately adjacent to this. We're talking now about 1,800 to 2,200 on the 200 acres that are west of the tracks in that area. So again, it's a much, much different level of density, and we are not a proponent of saying the density that we have at Schlegel, we want to just continue coming down and have all of that. We want to have very dense densities. So again, I, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear about open space, open area. I actually am not that familiar with what the difference between the two is in your code.
Well, I think the problem, too, is that your renderings look very, very dense. I mean, it looks like, from the angle and the way in which it's drawn, it looks like buildings are covering the whole site. And so I think that's like, that's the only thing that our community really has to go off of, is like this one picture that keeps getting shown. And it's hard to know, you know, we're talking about specific plan, it's going to change, it might look different, but for the community, that's what they're seeing, and that looks really overwhelming.
That's a very good point. That's a very good point.
And also, to Cliff's point, you also mentioned Title 27.
Yes.
So that's another thing to add to the list.
Absolutely. No, I have it written down here, yeah, absolutely.
It's, it's not a surprise to us that you'd like us to do Title.
And, and also, you, you address public transportation.
Yes.
And so currently, we have rail yard, I mean, a, a train station that is disconnected from the Bus Rapid Transit. That's, you know, we need to, we need to work on that. So, thank you.
We understand.
And then, just one last thing. Yeah, is, I, I've never heard anybody from the public and from our community say that we need to increase the commercial space because UPC can make more money. I, I don't know where, where that came from.
To let me correct you, I didn't say it came from this group.
No, no, I said you're talking about people from the community.
The creative land use people said you need amount of development to make it feasible for them to clean up. Many people have said it. It didn't come from this body. And I resent that...
No.
Two people have implied that I was meaning that you were saying...
I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't say that.
Okay.
So, but anyways, my, my intent of moving forward with the commercial is for the benefit of the city, so that we have the proper revenues to offset the expenses. And, and this is what we currently have in our town. It works for providing, you know, responsible revenue and expenditures, but we also know that we have millions of dollars in capital improvements that we cannot fund. We also have unfunded liabilities for our pensions. So, and we're not going to have a cash cow like Rycology with this development. So it's, it's going to be different, and, and the margins are going to be really thin. And there's just no way that I will put the city at financial risk. It's in our, our general plan amendment that we make sure that the financials are positive for us. And by having a lower square footage of commercial at an FAR that is compatible with, with Sharepoint, you know, that, that, that makes sense. It's not, it's not real dense, and it provides a cushion of financial security for the city.
Okay. So, hold on, hold on. Yeah, hold on, hold on.
[inaudible].
So...
Can you make some other meaning?
No. No, I don't think we do. Yeah.
In fairness to Councilmember O'Connell, I do want to say that that exact point was brought up at least in one presentation because it came from Sacramento. So it was raised months ago, and it wasn't anybody on the council, but it absolutely was raised in a meeting. So it's not the first time it's come up.
Well, it's been raised by, by people speaking tonight in the audience. It wasn't raised, so...
Yeah.
But again, 11:15, my patience is short, and, and, and there's no good decisions that come out of that.
All right.
We're not making any decisions tonight, anyways.
We're looking at flexibility.
We should wrap it up.
We're looking at flexibility here. I'm looking at flexibility on this. It's a general plan amendment. It goes through, I mean, because really what I want to see, if this general plan amendment gets passed, and I want to see it get passed, I want to see UPC come back with a specific plan that is building a community, okay? We know it's not going to be physically connected to Brisbane, but I think we owe it to our citizens here and to whoever's citizens are that live out there, that we build the absolute... and to whoever's citizens are that live out there, that we build the absolute best community we can. So you put in the flexibility that you can in order to do that, and also have the fiscal responsibility for the city, where, you know, we can pay down those things, and what you're talking about, the unfunded liability. So I think it's important. So a question I want to ask is, is, was presented about moving the residential even further south. Does anybody on the council wish to entertain that?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. All right, I want to ask the question. Okay. Terry, I know you're tired, but there's a couple of people want to...
Let them speak.
Are you, hey, Linda?
If you hope the people of Brisbane vote for this, then you have to integrate everything that Lloyd, Floyd, which are you, with...
It's Lloyd.
Okay. Talked about on, on apparently this attachment B, a hundred some odd pages, which is not included here. If those details are not referenced in here, referring to attachment B very specifically, they will not be considered part of your amendment. We learned that on the Northeast Ridge, okay? You gotta dot your i's and cross your t's, and you gotta do it right. You gotta do it. And before you vote on this, okay? That's number one. And number two, your plan does absolutely nothing except obliterate very sensitive habitat that is busy cleaning up the pollution, okay? It's the plants and the animals that do it. And if you destroy that, which is what this is calling for, destroying this area, you're not going to get any real remediation at all. And you're not, it's just, it's never going to solve anything. So there are a couple of issues that you really have to look at very, very carefully, and don't just rubber stamp this. I beg of you, otherwise...
We're not.
Thank you.
Okay, Barbara?
Yeah, I have the utmost respect for Mr. Zola. I'm pretty sure he's got an IQ about ten times mine. But I don't, I still don't under, his, like, I heard this, but it made no sense to me. Why do we have to zone it mixed-use if we know there's not going to be any housing out there? I mean, it just seems to me like we're throwing mud in the water. I don't, I don't understand what benefit we're getting out of it. He said it's for flexibility, but what flexibility does it call, gain calling it mixed-use if we're not going to put any housing out there? It seems to me just like a loophole that's going to come back and bite us. And I just think that that is a re, I just can't fathom it. I, I, none of the things he said made any sense to me in terms of why we would want to do this, why it would benefit us. Also, I heard Mr. Swackey say some vague things about why it would not work. I am not going to take up the council's time, why efficiency housing would not work. I am not going to take up the council's time tonight with that, but I would like an, an answer from him. And I don't know if I need counsel to direct him to answer me, since I'm just a little citizen, or not, but if I do, I would appreciate it if he would do that. Thank you.
Wait, answer you on what?
On why, why efficiency housing won't work out there. I mean, I know UPC's not going to like it. I got that part, but there were some other things that kind of went mutter, 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 and I, those didn't make sense to me. And I would like to have a full conversation around that.
He'll give you an answer.
He says he'll do it.
Okay.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
You want to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Motion second to adjourn, okay.
Before we adjourn, did we need to report out from closed session? Michael.
Michael.
Terry brought up a good point. Do we need to report out from closed session? Which we didn't do it again.
Yes, the council did meet in closed session as the housing authority, and gave direction to the executive director with respect to the two parcels in question.
Okay. All right.
And we had a second part, closed session. We had a second closed session meeting.
Apologize again. Yes, we had a, the council had a closed session with respect to potential litigation, and no action mistaken on that matter.
Thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned. We will meet again, take this item up on July nineteenth, which is next Thursday, and looking at hopefully being able to pass the general plan amendment, and then put it on the ballot. Okay, thank you.